So today is very much about public health and you guys are doing a great job so far. We're asking that you wear a mask at all times. Town moderator is the only guy who has permission to take his mask off if need be because I would never say no to him on anything. Also, if you could stay seated as much as you can and maintain six feet distance when you're not seated. If you feel like you'd like to get up and speak at the microphone, ask that you walk to the back and through the aisle this way, communion style. When you're done, walk back around the side. And then, we also have porta-potties on the side here with six-foot lines as well. They'll be disinfected after every use. And lastly, you know, I know when we get to the last couple articles of continued committees and gifts, we typically start getting up early and leaving, but I'm asking you to stay seated until that final vote and the ushers will actually start from the back and let you exit in a formal manner. So that's it. Thank you all for coming and let's do it.
Let's do it. So, we don't have any Boy Scouts today and we don't have any Girl Scouts, but we've got a wonderful person who is actually here for her last day of working for the town, Bobby Joe. And I kindly, I asked her if she would mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag and she very kindly volunteered to do that. Thank you Bobby Joe. Go for it. "To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." So the next order of business is a pleasure for me and that is the announcement of the Citizen of the Year Award. Now, this year has been bizarre in so many ways that it's really made it hard. It's hard to reduce it to a Citizen of the Year. There are so many of our town employees have extended themselves far and beyond what their duties are and what we could expect from them. The town has really performed incredibly and so many people, I could just give you many examples, but we have to figure out who to award it to. And luckily, we had not one but two town citizens or members that went far and above beyond any expectation that anybody could put before them. So, I couldn't reduce it to one Citizen of the Year Award, but I did get it down to two and I think you'll agree with me as to who the awardees should be. So the first awardee is our illustrious town administrator, Tony Barretta. He has done an incredible job as being town administrator under the worst possible circumstances that could descend on any of us. Even before the pandemic hit, he was incredible as a town administrator. He sought perfection in everything he did. He's been incredible depending on making every detail right. He served greatly for the Board of Selectmen and for everybody in town. But after that, after the pandemic came, his job went up in difficulty exponentially and he stepped up to the plate and did everything. Just as an example, look around what you've got here. He has gone through meticulously and thought of everything that has to be done and how it could go wrong and designed the system and this whole scheme, so he and Zach, so that nothing would go wrong and we would have a very healthy and functioning town meeting. I saw Zach this morning, I came over to check things out and he said, "Yeah, Tony and I are going to go into the wedding planning business." And I said, "Well, I'd like to sign up for you, but I'm already happily married, so I can't..." But if I have any more, maybe my grandkids, I don't know, they'll be coming up. But you just have to, like now, I'd say Tony has been above and beyond any call of duty and deserves the Nahant Citizen of the Year Award in 2020. Tony? That's all right. So who else would be somebody that we could all look to and see, "Wow, there's somebody who really went above and beyond." Well, this lady went to the town hall one day and somebody said, "Hey, why don't you be the town public health nurse? Hey, there's nothing to it. Couple hours a week at most. Don't worry about a thing. Everything will be all right. You can do it, heck, you can do it from bed, no problem at all." And Debbie Murphy said yes and she became our town public health nurse. And since that time, especially since the pandemic, instead of two hours a week, she's probably been putting in 60. She's been keeping track of every possible infection in town, people that are supposed to be sequestered. She really has her fingers on the pulse of the town. She's dealt with the health people with the state, she's dealt with the selectmen, she's dealt with everybody in town. She's really done an incredible job. And I think if you look in the proposed salary for her, they had like, they proposed maybe five hours or 10 hours of her work, but she has been working day and night since she got into it. She's done a marvelous job. I don't think she's here today. Debbie, are you here? No, I think not. But we owe her a tremendous debt of gratitude for keeping the town healthy and keeping us in mind. So Debbie Murphy. Do we have a Charlie Kelly Scholarship Award?
So the Charles Kelly Scholarship, the way this is done is that, you know, it's to a senior who's graduating and has to do an essay in what does public service mean to him or her. We had five, I believe, applicants this year and I understand that when we vote, we vote anonymously, so we just check applicant one, two, three, four, five. And this year, Mark Quigley is awarded the Charles Kelly Scholarship.
All right. Now, we all have these electronic gizmos here with which we will vote and it really was helpful last time when we had a demonstration on how it works. And today Jessica from the organization that got these to us will come up and demonstrate how you use your voting buttons to respond on the various motions that we'll have going. Jessica?
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me all right? Okay. So we're going to do a quick example of how to vote. If you can go ahead and take me live to screen. Okay, in just a moment, I'm going to put a question up for you and to answer the question, what you'll do is you'll take your voting card and you'll simply press 1A or 2B, whatever corresponds with your answer. So I'm going to go ahead and put the question up. And our question today is, "Doesn't the town moderator look great today?" Press 1 yes if you agree, 2B if you don't agree. I'm going to go ahead and start a timer for you. When the timer clicks down, this is going to be your last 30 seconds to vote and we'll see how everyone agrees.
And this is a secret ballot. We're not going to keep track of who took what position.
Can we vote more than once?
You can vote more than once, but only your last vote is counted. So if you find that you change your minds after consideration, if you click in before the timer counts down, whatever you voted last will count.
Maybe I should step out in front of that.
Well, it looks like the majority of you, 73, feel that the town moderator does look amazing today and I would agree with you. And do you feel comfortable or do you want to try one more question to practice? One more?
One more.
All right. Our next question is, "It's a great day for town meeting." Press 1 for yes or 2 for no and I'm going to go ahead and start your timer now. And it looks like the majority feel that it's a great day for town meeting. So I guess let's get to it. Thank you so much.
Indeed. Could I, I've got some names of non-voters who are on the floor, Tony Barretta, Chief Dwyer, Jeff Blake, Zach Taylor, Tony Franzosi. Are there any other non-voters on the floor?
John Kulon.
John Kulon?
Republican, John Kulon.
Oh, sure, John. All right. You don't have a voting thing though, right? You're all set then. Anybody else, John? Yes. Kevin?
Catherine.
Catherine Clark? All right. Great. Thank you very much. All right, with that, I think we can move to motion number one. Yes, we definitely had a quorum before I started the whole proceeding.
Okay. I move that the town adopt the following resolution. Resolve that the town meeting adopt the following rule governing motions and amendments made during the 2020 annual town meeting. Whereas, without an override, the amount to be raised by taxation as recommended by the Advisory and Finance Committee is expected to be $10,849,982 for fiscal year 2021. And whereas, Proposition 2 and 1/2 makes it unlawful for the town to levy taxes in excess of $10,849,982 for the fiscal year 2021 without the vote to override the limit. Therefore, in order to ensure compliance with the levy limit imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, the participants of the 2020 annual town meeting shall require that anyone introducing a motion at this meeting, which would result in increasing an appropriation above the amount permissible under the levy limit imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, be obliged to specify the alternative means of funding by giving names of other articles or accounts excluding the reserve fund and the amount by which the appropriated or recommended amount for such account or articles must be reduced in order to fund the requested increase.
Seconded by Mr. Van Der Slayce. Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor, well, I guess we vote the electronic way. So let's set this up. Call for the vote. All right. Voting on the resolution. Please vote now. All right, let's do this by voice vote. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Article 1. Mr. Van Der Slayce.
I move that the town amend Article 13, Section 5, Subsection B of Nahant Town Bylaws for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 by replacing the existing section with the section under Part 1 as shown in the September 2020 Report and Recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee on Pages 6, 7, and 8, except for the following changes. Number 1, on Page 6, add a new position entitled Reference and Adult Services Librarian with a salary range of $16,500 to $56,430. Number 2, on Pages 7 and 8, replace the table of fiscal year 21 salaries for the non-school unions with the table that appears on the screen hopefully. Yes.
It should be July 2020? 2020? But it starts July 2020, correct?
Correct.
Beginning July 2020.
So, put...
2021. You said 2021. It should be 2020.
In the motion for the table of fiscal year...
2020.
Okay, all right, fine. Beginning July 1st, 2020, which is fiscal 21.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? I think before we go to the pass, we'd like to have, you can give an explanation of what's going on.
Do we need a second?
Yes, you need a second. I'm sorry, Mr. Brown.
All right. So what's going on? There are two changes here. The first change is really management prerogative inside the library. They want a new position, which is the Reference and Adult Services Librarian. They're going to rearrange their existing personnel so that the net effect is there will be no bottom line change to the library budget, there will be no bottom line change to the payroll budget within the library, and there will be no bottom line change to the omnibus, which is Article 4, I believe. The second change, the table in the book, the table in the book is essentially incorrect by 1%. It's low by 1%, so we need to amend all of the numbers that appear in the table in the book. The omnibus is funded for the correct amount, so there will be no change to the omnibus. It's just this detailed table that needs to change.
Okay, I heard a pass. Somebody would like to discuss? Please come up. Okay, we got a couple people. Yep, you're fine.
With this pass, the Board of Assessors make a motion to change the job title of Assistant Assessor to Town Assessor. The current job title does not accurately describe the stature, responsibilities, or duties of the position. It is a department head position. This change, this title change to the assessors is intended to leave no doubt about the responsibilities associated with the position and importance and fair equitable evaluation necessary for state certification for setting them tax-free. As noted by Mr. Van Der Slayce concerning the amendments to the warrant article, this is a simple motion and does not request any money or salary changes.
So you're...
Thank you.
Could you point me to where you were proposing to make the change?
So Page 6, under the position subject to classification of salary plan fiscal year 2021. Under the position right now currently, if you look down that line, if I could enforce this, there is no other department head described as an assistant. The Board of Assessors set policy and set procedure and vote on items for abatements to approve or decline as necessary based upon the law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so, we feel that it's better to find that the Assistant Assessor should be considered the Town Assessor considering that is a department head position.
All right. Is there a second?
Right here.
Very good. Is there a discussion on the amendment?
Why do we stand where we stand? Why is the position currently described as an assistant?
Actually, that's relatively easy to answer. Back in history, actually, I've been currently Chair of the Board of Assessors and I've been there for 14 years fractured by timeframe when I served the town in a different capacity. But back before then, the assessors actually had a salary and they actually were a working board. So at that point in time, Assistant Assessor may have been a more appropriate term to be used for the assessor in town. But the current assessor, Sheila Hamilton, who sits here, has been providing that service to the town and I believe that it is appropriate that the title should be Town Assessor as opposed to Assistant Assessor because we set policy procedures and vote upon abatements and exemptions as such. But going, the day-to-day chief assessing is done by the appointed position by the Board of Assessors, which happens to be right now Sheila Hamilton and she's been in that position for 20-plus years.
So there's no current position to which Sheila is an assistant, correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The amendment carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, good. Ensuring your good health.
Danny Monalee, Sixth Lodge Road, to speak in favor of the Article 1 with its amendment to include the change in classification for the library job that we have in the book. Mr. Van Der Slayce correctly described our process that for this fiscal year, there'll be no increase in the salary of that position, so it doesn't affect this budget. But it's very important that the town approve this article because for us to, and for the town to make any payment to an employee, there has to be the two steps that are laid out in the article. It has to be established, you have to have the classification listed, and the library needs to do that. The library now is asking the town to consider and support this adjustment in the job description because we're looking for a future salary appropriation. This change in the classification will correct the long oversight of underpaying a full-time person, a non-salaried position. The new position named the Adult Reference Services Librarian will have the salary range that we mentioned and the increase will be covered by postponing currently the hiring of an open position of a children's librarian. So for this fiscal year, will be no increases at all. Next year, we'll return and ask the town for additional funding for this position. And so, you know, this is an important thing for our library as we professionalize the library. It's 200 years old, our library collection. We're very proud of it and by putting forth this article, we'll be able to continue our push to professionalize. There was a time when there was a library director and nine part-time people primarily to reshevel books. Things are very different now. We have online, electronic, large databases, lots of contact, and we really want to thank the town for its support, the town administrator, the selectmen, the FinCom, and all the townspeople that use this very important service, even during the COVID times. We've been operational, serving the town people, providing the electronic resources and we hope that by adjusting this line item and by funding it by a very small amount in the next fiscal year, at the next town meeting, we'll be able to professionalize and retain properly educated and certified library people. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you very much.
Please state your name and your address.
Of course, Dave. Will do. Love your time, man.
Thank you. Historical society, very cheap.
Oh, yes, right. Bonnie DeRlando, 37, Marginal Road in Nahant. My mother was a library trustee or became one when she found out that in Moultonburg, New Hampshire, the town librarian with a college degree and multiple courses to help her out from the state librarian was paid less than the dump attendant, okay? We have an incredible person in the library. Her name is Carolyn Ziering and I'm sure a lot of you know who she is. She has done incredible work, all right, for us all and she delivers books to people shut in by COVID and I cannot speak more highly of her courage and her loyalty despite what we're paying her currently and I wish with all my heart that you would all know about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie. Further discussion?
We'll go this way? Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's call for the vote to be set up. All right, those in favor of the motion as amended for Article 1 signify by saying yes and those opposed, no, start voting now. Those in favor, 73. Those opposed, 8. The motion carries. Article 2. She has done incredible work, all right, for us all, and she is, she delivers books to people shut in by COVID. And I cannot speak more highly of her courage and her loyalty despite what we're paying her currently, and I wish with all my heart that you would all know about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie. Further discussion?
We go this way? Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's call for the vote to be set up. All right, those in favor of the motion as amended for Article One signify by saying yes, and those opposed, no, start voting now. Those in favor, 73. Those opposed, eight. The motion carries. Article Two.
I move the town fix the salaries of the following elected officials: Selectmen at the annual salary of $1; Constable at the annual salary of $50; Assessors at the annual salary of $1; Town Clerk at the annual salary of $57,169.
Seconded by Ms. Tarmey. Okay, discussion on the mark, Paul.
I move to amend said motion for Article Two, compensation for elected positions, and strike the town clerk annual salary of $57,169 and replace said salary with $60,637.
Seconded? Do we have a second?
Well, we'll have to deal with that in the omnibus article, but I can tell you it will be coming from the overlay surplus account.
No, we had a second.
We had a second.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me give you a little background on this. As you all know, we have a new town clerk. She was elected during a special election, I believe it took place in June. Prior to that, the salary was set at $60,637. Our new clerk ran for that position, was elected, and has been serving admirably in that position since. I can tell you that I'm at the town hall most every day, and our town clerk is usually the first one there in the morning and the last one to leave at the end of the day. She has performed quite well under extraordinary conditions. We've had, especially, we've had town elections, state elections, and we're having a presidential election. All of this in the midst of COVID-19. She has done a terrific job, and to think that we would cut their pay halfway through the year is, in my opinion, not the right move. So I ask you to restore this to what it was paid for last year and support this motion.
Further discussion?
I'd like to understand how we came to that number, where that number kind of came from. So our previous town clerk worked in the position for 15 years. When we knew that there was a new town clerk, in February, when we were still meeting together as FinCom, we decided that at that time, we would reduce the salary, because this is an entry-level position for a new town clerk. This has nothing to do with the person, this was about the position as it was decided, because we thought that someone coming in brand-new to the position had to have some ability to have a salary increase over the years, and they hadn't been in the position for 15 years, as our previous town clerk. So there was a lot of discussion about it, and the discussion, decision was made originally last February. It was again brought up, I guess in May or June, we talked about it a couple of different times. And the, meanwhile, truly, the Finance Committee has turned over. So there was a previous discussion in February, it was agreed, decision was made in May that perhaps we should start a little higher, and then that decision was that number came from. So it's not, it's not personal. It's really about, does someone who's been in a job new and doing truly a tremendous job and under very difficult circumstances, should they be paid the same amount of money as someone who had done that job for 15 years? It's not the person, it's about the position. And then we need to also consider that there, we have very little revenue coming in to Nahat, right? We're a little town, not a lot of revenue, and really, the majority of our expenses are salaries. Where is the money coming from? So that's a very good question that was asked. Where is the money coming from? Because we've got this year, and we go at this salary now, next year they'll be expecting an increase, and then ongoing, but there's no additional revenue coming in. I wanted you to know that the Finance Committee made a very, very thoughtful decision, and that's where it came from. It wasn't arbitrary, it wasn't, it's never about the person, it's really about where is the money coming from, and do we start a position, a brand-new position, at the same salary as someone who's been doing the work for 15 years?
Further discussion on the amendment? Yes. Mr. Barlata.
I would like to voice my support for the amendment that Mr. Chairman presented. For a little bit of explanation as well, we're having town meeting today in September instead of in May. For that reason, we've had to get 1/12 budgets approved by the Board of Selectmen and the Department of Revenue each month leading up until today. Part of the guidelines that we are restricted from the Department of Revenue is that all pay raises, contract, contracted raises or otherwise, could not be expended until we have this meeting here today. So every position was being paid level-funded from the salary of last year. So any approval to the salary classification plan today or to the omnibus retros back to July 1. Therefore, without this amendment, you're, it's effectively a cut to the clerk's position, to the clerk's salary, back to July 1, where she's already been getting paid at the $60,000 amount approved by town meeting last year. So for that reason, I think it's very important, especially, you know, and I know the FinCom did put a lot of thought into this, and I don't think it's personal, but for me, you know, being, working in the town hall, I will say personally, you know, Diane jumped into the position in the middle of a pandemic, had to learn the position quickly, have a recount, have a presidential primary, a new type of town meeting, you know, a number of things, and she's done it without one complaint. She's filled the position extremely well and is there, you know, probably 10 hours more than she's supposed to be there on average a week, you know, so she's doing more work than she's even getting paid for. So I voice my support for the amendment and hope that it is approved.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Just very quickly, it doesn't seem fair to take a position at one pay and then five months into it have your pay cut without cause, really. So to me, it's really, really a matter of fairness. Thanks.
All right, further discussion on the amendment? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye, all right.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. Now we go to the motion as amended, and the amendment was to change the numbers 57,169 at the bottom of that page to 60,637. So now, is there any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing and hearing none, let's set up the vote to go. You're in favor, say yes. You're opposed, say no, and start voting now. Those in favor, 67. Those opposed, no, four, 14, excuse me. 67 to 14. Thank you very much. Let's go to Article Three. Mr. Van Der Slayce.
I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Seconded by Mr. Fulgham. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Sorry, we could save the 30 seconds. All right, Article Four.
So this is a long one. I move that the town to transfer the sum of $494,422 from free cash and $60,000 from overlay surplus, and raise and appropriate the following sums of money for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. Moderator, general expenses, $60. Selectmen, salary, $3. Selectmen, general expenses, $140,000, $140,400. Town Administrator, salaries and wages, $226,151. Health Inspector, $10,867. Public Health Nurse, $3,533. Assistant Health Inspector, $0. Town Physician, $500. ADA Coordinator, $500. General Expenses, $39,150. Capital Outlay, $2,900.
Could I, I hate to interrupt, but I just wanted to explain, I think everybody knows, that if there is an item that comes up and you want to raise a discussion of the item, shout out pass when that, when you hear the item read. And then when the entire thing has been read, we'll go back to any article that's passed and we'll discuss, raise that for discussion. Are there any passes on any of the items that have been read so far? Okay, sorry.
No problem.
Please go ahead.
So I'll repeat again, capital outlay, $2,900, of which $2,900 is funded from free cash. Advisory and Finance Committee, general expenses, $20,160. Town Accountant, salaries and wages, $192,005. General Expenses, $9,217. Assessors' salaries and wages and general expenses, $153,633. Treasurer/Collector, salaries and wages, $125,832. Treasurer/Collector, general expenses, $62,250. Treasurer and Collector, capital outlay, $1,400, of which $1,400 is funded from free cash. Town Council, annual fee, $55,000. Town Hall, salaries and wages, $31,261. Town Hall, general expenses, $47,500. Town Hall, capital outlay, $10,000. Town Hall, of which $10,000 is funded from free cash. Data Processing, salaries, wages, and general expenses, $196,800. Town Clerk, salaries, wages, and general expenses, $78,925. Town Clerk, capital outlay, $1,400, of which $1,400 is funded from free cash. Election Registration, salaries, wages, and general expenses, $16,715. Conservation Commission, general expenses, $1,260. Planning Board, general expenses, $2,650. Board of Appeals, general expenses, $2,900. Police Department, salaries and wages, $1,348,928. Police Department, general expenses, $148,580. Police Department, capital outlay, $60,750, of which $60,750 is funded from free cash. Fire Department, salaries and wages, $933,829. General Expenses, $170,600. Fire Department, capital outlay, $30,000, of which $30,000 is funded from free cash. Inspection Services, salaries and general expenses, $17,809. Building Inspector, salaries and wages, $18,102. Building Inspector, general expenses, $7,000. Plumbing and Gas Inspector, salaries and wages, $6,935. Plumbing and Gas Inspector, general expenses, $950. Wiring Inspector, salaries and wages, $6,935. Wiring Inspector, general expenses, $950. Civil Defense, salaries, wages, and general expenses, $13,297. Animal Control, salaries and wages, $9,983. Animal Control, general expenses, $3,990. Parking Clerk, general expenses, $13,500. Harbor Master, salaries and wages, $3,323. Harbor Master, general expenses, $7,280. Orfinger, salaries and wages, $1,942. Orfinger, general expenses, $1,552. Orfinger, capital outlay, $1,500, of which $1,500 is funded from free cash. School Department, salaries, wages, and general expenses, $3,723,815. School Department, transportation expenses, $216,859. Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School Assessment, $188,428. Debt Service, $365,600. Public Works, snow removal, $30,000. Salaries, wages, and general expenses for Public Works Administration, highways and streets, beaches and parks, cemetery, and overhead capital outlay, I'm sorry, over, salaries and wages and general expenses for the Public Works Administration, highways and streets, beaches and park, cemetery, and overhead, $427,740. Capital Outlay, $36,500, of which $36,500 is funded from free cash. Debt Service, $67,690. Library, salaries, wages, and general expenses, $228,127. Recreation, general salaries, wages, and general expenses, $3,090. Recreation, Sailing, salaries, wages, and general expenses, $5,000. Recreation, Tennis, salaries, wages, and general expenses, $2,880. Council on Aging, salaries and wages and general expenses, $58,105. Veterans Agents, Veterans Agent, salaries, wages, and general expenses, $46,815. Historical Commission, general expenses, $0. Memorial Day Committee, general expenses... Memorial Day Committee, general expenses, $7,500. Fourth of July Committee, general expenses, $2,300. Beautification Committee, general expenses, $2,150. Military Housing, general expenses, $83,980. Military Housing Debt, Principal, and Interest, $405,467, of which, $10,000 is funded from overlay surplus and $152,527 is funded from free cash. Pension and Annuity Expense, Essex Regional Retirement Board Expense, Unemployment Compensation, Group Health and Life Insurance Expense, Medicare Tax Expense, $2,055,000. Retirement Account, $50,000, of which, $50,000 is funded from overlay surplus. Insurance Committee, general expense, $283,472. Reserve Fund, $343,913, of which, $197,445 is funded from free cash. And that's it.
Great job, and I didn't hear a single snore, that's amazing to me. There was one thing you read though on Orfinger salaries and expenses, general expenses, you read 1552, but the number actually is 1752, I believe.
Do you want me to reread it?
No, I think I just did.
Okay.
But other than that, perfect. And we had a pass on debt service after salaries, wages, and general expenses for public work. Mark, was it you?
No, I have a pass on.
Oh yes, of course. First pass is Mr. Cullinan, I should say Chairman Cullinan, on Town Clerk Wages, Salaries, and General Expenses.
Yes, this is the follow-up on Article Two. I move to amend line item 24 Town Clerk Salary, Wages, and the Omnibus Budget by striking said amount and replacing it with $69,388 and therefore also amend the motion of Town Clerk Salary, Wages, and General Expenses by striking said amount and replacing it with $82,393 to account for the increase in the Town Clerk salary voted on in the previous Article Two. And such funds of $3,468 will come from the overlay surplus account.
Seconded. Discussion on the amendment. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote in favor. Yes, sir. This is in the pass in debt service?
I believe that's the right spot, but I may be, I may have missed by one. Brendan Baronic Olmstead, 2 Summer Street, had a question, has the town completed its purchase of the streetlights? Okay, so that has been done. Also, where is the O&M cost for the streetlights? Is that incorporated in the DPW's budget or is that a separate line item? Okay.
Okay, just so everybody hears, it's in the DPW budget.
All right, because I saw that there was an increase about $10,000 from the previous year's budget and the plan that we passed last year estimated the average, the O&M cost would be about $5,000. So does that still track with the previous estimate?
Why don't you get up the mic, yep.
Thank you, Brendan. Thank you. So, under the purchase of services within the DPW's budget, the money that you're targeting there might not be, might not be able to pull it exactly for those services. And we haven't put that out to bid yet either. So, the streetlight project, actually I think the streetlights are being delivered this week or next week and that conversion is occurring over the next month. So we actually won't realize the savings until those go into place. And we, the contractor who actually does the installation has O&M on the, for the first year. So it won't be until next year's town meeting that we'll have to make the adjustment on the energy savings downward and O&M a little upward.
Okay. Now, the FY '20 budget, Article 25 that we voted on, on note five from page 116 had said that there should be a contingency of $4,000 in reserve for non-labor stuff. I didn't see a contingency put in there or has that already been incorporated in the budget?
Can you repeat the question?
So that there was a recommendation of an annual $4,000 contingency fund for non-
Which page?
This is in the FY '20 budget. So I can pull it up, but it was note number five. But specifically a recommendation, I wasn't sure if that recommendation was adopted or not.
Is that for the purchase of the streetlights?
No, this was after the purchase, it was additional O&M costs for non-labor things and I guess for like, you know, replacement parts going forward.
Okay. Then it would have been accounted for in last year's budget?
No, because it was a recommendation. I was just, since it seems like the money for the, for the streetlights O&M is incorporated in the overall DPW's and you said you've got it now contracted for the first year. I was checking to see if the contingency budget was also being incorporated as well.
Probably not yet. So, like I said, the O&M that we are receiving from the contractor that's installing the lights is baked into the price of that project. So it won't be, it probably won't go in until the next fiscal year, next year's budget, because we get that service for a year. And there's a one-year warranty on all the parts.
Okay, I guess there, my other question, should that on July 25th of 2020 that we spent $70,000 on, I guess the lights are, that's the money that was allocated and should there is a $700 interest payment for FY 2021, but there is no interest rate or term on the loan provided in the table?
Do you know what the interest rate would have been?
It's only a one-year short-term borrowing currently. So whatever the rate is and that fluctuates year to year, we're not, when we bond, we'll have the actual rate.
Okay.
It's a, and that was a probably a revenue anticipatory note because, you know, much of that money was being funded through the Green Communities Grant or from MAPC. So, a lot of that, a lot of that borrowing will be paid off through those grants.
All right, I guess my final question is, there was a mention that the estimated payoff period would be about three and a half months from the savings. Is that still in line with what you're seeing?
Yeah, probably. We won't know for sure until we actually see the savings on the, on the energy use and have final numbers on, on the contract and what we get back from National Grid. So, it's in line there, we don't know exactly quite yet, but yeah, we think we'll have that paid off in about three months.
Okay. Well, I guess one question sparked to mind. Is it still part of the Dark Skies program? I know we had adopted that previously.
Yes, so the fixtures that we purchased are Dark Sky compliant. We went with a warmer color and they're all directive LED. So, for example, like when you go down the causeway, you see how the lights point right down and they don't point outward or upward. Same style.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, next.
Janet Dolan, 45 Pleasant Street.
Hello Janet.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. Is this the appropriate time to ask a question on the entire omnibus budget?
I guess there are no other passes, so probably this is the time.
Okay, just two questions. How much is the certified free cash that is being used to fund a lot of what is in the omnibus budget?
We have certified 621,000, Janet.
Okay.
We are planning to use it all, but not all in the omnibus.
Okay.
For our stabilization. We haven't gotten a certified free cash from last year. So that's unincluded, this is from the previous year.
So the 621 is from?
Would have been used in April or May.
Oh, okay, okay.
But this is not being announced.
Okay, okay. Okay, and the other question is on the overlay surplus amount. Is there, is there a total? I know some, some of these items are being funded from overlay surplus, but I just wanted to know the amount.
Total. Question was on the overlay surplus amount. The total's $91,026. $60,000 of that has been used.
Plus another $3,000 for the car.
Right, so that's $60,000. In that, in the motion that the chairman read, that $60,000 that's been used now turns into $63, something like that. And there's about $31,000 in available unappropriated overlay surplus. Now that'll come down to about $29.
Okay. And to spend the, to spend the $29,000, is that only done at a town meeting? Because it's an appropriation?
It's that, that's unappropriated funds, that amount there. What we use, what we use overlay surplus is, as you know, is for abatements. So if any, if any abatements come in throughout the year, we have the money there to provide those. So sometimes it doesn't all get used. So, that 31 that's now going to be 29 will stay in the overlay surplus account.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Further discussion on the omnibus article. Seeing and hearing none, let's set the article up for voting now. Those in favor of the motion signify by indicating yes on your device. Those opposed, no. And start voting now. We have a vote. Those in favor, 71. Those opposed, four. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Your patience and your votes are appreciated. Now let's go to Article Five. Mr. Brown.
I move that the town appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. Salaries, $412,345. Capital outlay, zero. Debt, $811,264. Emergency reserve uncollectible, $40,350. Total, $2,449,950. And that, $1,864,546 be funded from Water and Sewer Department receipts for said purposes with $811,264,264 raised through debt shift and indirect costs appropriated in the general fund but assigned to the enterprise for funding in the amount of $225,860.
Seconded by Ms. Beatty. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, let's be prepared to vote. On Article Number Five. Those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, no. And start voting now. We have a vote, ladies and gentlemen. Those in favor, 72. Those opposed, four. The motion carries. We go to Article Six. Mr. Brown.
I move that the town appropriate from retained earnings in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund $30,000 to pave roads and sidewalks throughout town, including all costs incidental or related thereto.
Seconded by Mr. Lewis. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, let's prepare to vote on the motion. Those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, no. And start voting now. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a vote. Those in favor, 65. Those opposed, six. The motion carries. You know, I'm kind of technologically declined and whenever my computer messes up, my new swear word that I, my favorite swear word is Gates because I figure it's him somewhere back. But this technology, I'm kind of falling in love with. This is pretty cool. I think it's going to help us a lot in getting through things and appreciate you using it. All right, Article Seven. Mr. Sheehan.
I move that the town appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Rubbish Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. Salaries, $59,810. Expenses, $453,620. Total, $512,701. And that, $512,701 be raised from rubbish department receipts for said purposes.
Seconded by Ms. Zahara. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, let's prepare to vote on the motion. Those in favor of it, vote yes. Those opposed, no. And start voting now. We have a vote. Those in favor, 65. Those opposed, five. The motion carries. Article Eight. Ms. Beatty.
Before I read the motion, I'd like to say that I'm new to the Advisory and Finance Committee and I would like to tell you that it's an honor to serve you and that I've learned a great deal and that the members of the committee, our Board of Selectmen, our Town Moderator, have been very helpful. So it's, it's really, it's been an enjoyable process and thank you very much. My motion is, excuse me. I move that the town raise and appropriate from available funds received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in fiscal year 2021 in order to accomplish certain highway construction and maintenance under the provisions- under the provisions of the General Laws, Chapter 90, or other state transportation program.
Seconded by Mr. Van der Sliess. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, let's prepare to vote. Those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, no. And start voting now. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a vote. Those in favor, 63. Those opposed, three. The motion carries. All right, Article Nine. Mr. Fulgham.
I, I move that the town accept Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53D, thereby reauthorizing parks and recreation revolving accounts for general recreation, basketball, sailing, tennis, Fourth of July, tot lots, playground equipment, and for the youth commission.
Seconded by Ms. Beatty. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, let's prepare to vote. Those in favor, say yes. Those opposed, no. And start voting now. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a vote. Those in favor, 63. Those opposed, four. So the motion carries. Article Ten. Ms. Ahora.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $25,000 to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund and to fund this appropriation from free cash.
Seconded by Mr. Brown. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, let's prepare to vote on it. If you're in favor of the motion, vote yes. If you're opposed, no. And start your voting now. We have a vote. 61 in favor, four opposed. The motion carries. Article Eleven. Mr. Fulgham.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $100,000 to the Stabilization Fund and to fund this appropriation from free cash.
Seconded by Ms. Tarmey. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, let's prepare to vote. If you're in favor of the motion, vote yes. If you're opposed, no. And start your voting now. We have a vote. Those in favor, 63. Those opposed, four. The motion carries. Article Twelve. Mr. Lewis.
Hello. I move that the town appropriate $100,000 to pay costs for paving throughout the town, including the payment of any other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. And that any premium received on the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded by Ms. Beatty. I have to say that almost sounds like poetry to me. I know that was written by an attorney someplace. And it just, it kind of gives music to my ears. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, let's prepare to vote. If you're in favor of the motion, vote yes. If you're opposed, no. And start your voting now. Yes. I realize that. We have a vote. It's, those in favor, 63. Those opposed, four. And so the, the motion passes. This is a borrowing motion, so it required a two-thirds vote. And it certainly clearly passed beyond that. Article Thirteen. Mr. Fulgham.
I move that the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $2,500 for the annual capital assessment used towards fire dispatch equipment, maintenance, and upgrades, including the payment of all incidental or related costs.
Seconded by Mr. Sheehan. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing and hearing none, those in favor, oh, we'll do it the other way. Prepare to vote. If you're in favor of the motion, vote yes. If you're opposed, no. Start your voting now. We have a vote. 64 in favor, three against. The motion passes. Article Fourteen. Ms. Tarmey.
I move that the town appropriate the sum of $4,600,000 to pay the costs of improvements to the Nahant Sewer Collection System, including the costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 8 of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority. That the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project. And that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any action necessary or convenient to carry out this project. And that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Seconded by Mr. Lewis. Further discussion on the motion. Yes, sir.
Yes. Brendan Baronic Olmstead, Two Summer Street. I know, first off, forgive me if I'm not up to date on our current sewer plan, but I know back in January, we had, I believe, a presentation in one of the Board of Selectmen meetings talking about alternatives to our sewer infrastructure problems. It's, from what I gather of the article, they're talking about spending money from the rotary, replacing, putting a liner in from the rotary all the way to the Lin, Sewer Water Treatment Plant. The January meeting talked about potentially connecting from Nahant directly across the harbor over to the sewer treatment plant. I know that there's the discussion of potentially, you know, doing work, the Army Corps of Engineers doing work in Lynn Harbor, and we were looking at the potential connection and that type of benefit. I'm just kind of trying to see, how does this expenditure of this $4.6 million for this liner for that pipe fit into a goal, I would say, that we have of trying to connect directly from Nahant to the sewer plant so that we're not at the mercy of the construction work that happens on the Linway? I guess that's my, sir, I'm just trying to get a better understanding as to how this project would fit into our desire to avoid any future breaks that seem to repeatedly happen on the Linway.
Mr. Brad.
Thank you, Brendan. We hired Wright Pierce to be our engineers on this problem of ours. And the first thing they did was take a look at a menu of different options. We obviously identified the Linway breaks as our most critical issue at the moment. And they explored crossing the harbor, and essentially, they did a seafloor analysis and essentially determined that it was not feasible and extremely costly, even if we got there. So that's off the table. So what we're doing is replacing our existing structure, our existing system. And they looked at the force main from the Ward Pump Station, Ward Road Pump Station, all the way to Lynn Treatment Plant, and broke it into different sections. From the rotary, like you said, from the rotary to the treatment plant is our worst part. As you get further down the line, the pipe gets thinner and thinner. So identified that area, and the idea there is, like you said, is to line that pipe with essentially a 50-year lifespan piece of plastic liner that is structural. And we have some money for, you know, for design. It's in the design phases now. But we need this additional funds in order to award the actual contract.
I guess then, the follow-up question is, the liner that they're talking about, is there any leak detection being put in there so we have a better idea as exactly where the breaks happen versus, you know, someone, you know, us finding out after the fact, after someone's digging in the Linway?
No, there isn't any, any leak detection in the pipe itself. There are different checkpoints along the way. I would say that, you know, really, a lot of the breaks that we've experienced weren't due to other construction happening in the Linway. It's more an electrolysis issue, where the, the pipe is just, has reached its age and it's corroding. So a lot of the breaks that we had were in areas where there's gas mains and, and it just seems to be an electrolysis issue, not really a, someone else digging in the rotary. I'll also say that we, we're not really, where our pipe is located shouldn't interfere much with where the developments are happening and where their planned pipes are going to go.
Okay. All right, I promised this would be the last one. So with the, oh, just flew it out of my head. The planned idea of the liner that's going to reduce the diameter of the, of the pipe's internal cavity, is that going to change the, the amount of material that can move through or create more back pressure? Are pumps going to be able to handle the reduction?
We looked into that. It is, it'll reduce it a little, but not, we have plenty of capacity in our existing pipe, so it's not, you know, based on our average amount of flow, it's not going to negatively impact it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Ken Corangelo, 81 Willow Road. Just two related questions. Last year, at town meeting, we approved 4.3 million of the borrowing for water and sewer. This is an additional amount. Is there, have we committed to some sort of long-term plan for water, sewer, and infrastructure? And this is in an engineer's report. Are we actually executing against a concrete plan of some kind?
So we had, I think it was a couple of years ago, that 4 million, 4.1. And there's about $3 million, 3.1, 3.2 remaining in that. The Linway job is estimated to be around six. And then we also have, that's just the section of the Linway from the rotary to the treatment plant. The, the pipe from the rotary back to basically Ward Road is on the horizon. It's going to need, it's going to need work at some point as well. The Willow Road force main that goes from the wharf to around this location here needs to be replaced as well. We have a capital plan for our pump, for our pump stations. And then we also are being pressured by Mass. DEP, all, all communities are, to attack our II issues in flow and infiltration. So that's on our internal network, making sure that we don't have leaks in our existing pipes. So we know what the issues are and how it's prioritized. This doesn't accomplish all of it, but it puts us in a place to fix our most critical concern, which is costing the town hundreds of thousands of dollars every time we have to make a repair, and puts us on the path for Willow Road, pump station upgrades, II issues. So we are following a plan. Like I said, this won't, this won't solve all of it, but it definitely will help prevent some of these unforeseen extreme cost expenses when we have a break. And we had a break, if you recall, I think you, when you were on the FinCon at, during a town meeting, that cost the town about a million dollars. And we replaced three feet of pipe. You know, so $6 million we're going to replace from the rotary all the way there. So that type of, those type of breaks are just, they're killing us. So that's what, that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Understood. I, I guess, and that, oh, that's great. I guess I'm wondering, in terms of the, the other parts of what we're in, the engineering report, and so that's not necessarily in what you just described. Is there, you know, has, has everything that we currently know of in the town been prioritized with some time, a decade or however long attached to it? Or are we, this seems just a little reactive, kind of, here to here.
Yes. It's, so we have done an analysis of our II issues throughout town. So, and we have done an analysis of our other force main on Willow and our pump stations and this, and this pump station. So we have all the data, and we know where the most critical parts are. So now prioritizing that capital plan is a little tricky because, you know, when you have a, a break on a side road, it may, you know, we have to go and fix and repair that, that job. But it only, you know, it doesn't cost the town a million dollars to do that job, right? So you want to try and attack the problems that are, when they're, when they're an issue, they're costing the town the most money. And then we also have the, but we have the pressure from DEP to follow the, you know, follow up on the II issues. And we have a sitting capital plan with our pump station. So you're taking all three pieces of that data and combining them and creating one big capital plan. So we have all the information now, and we're, we're prioritizing it based on that. So, we have all the information now, and we're prioritizing it based on that.
And one final question, bridging the world of Facebook with here. Just questions, is there, or who, who, from the town's perspective, is accountable, sort of, as the project manager, in terms of time, budget, quality, et cetera? Who's, who is the town's point of contact for these projects?
It would be myself or Zach, our TBW director, superintendent.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, though, let's vote on it. If you're in favor of the motion, vote yes. If you're opposed, no. And start your voting now. Yes, this is another, this is borrowing, so it's a two-thirds vote, as pointed out. And we have a vote, those in favor, sixty-seven. Those opposed, one. So, the motion carries. Article Fifteen. Ms. Tarmey.
I move that the town continue the following standing committees to June 30th, 2021. Community Preservation Committee, Cable TV Advisory Committee, Veterans Memorial Committee, Sailing Committee, Cemetery Advisory Committee, Coast Guard Design and Development Advisory Committee, Town Charter and Bylaw Committee, Tennis Committee, Town-Owned Land Study Committee, Nahat Alternative Energy Committee, Golf Course Management Advisory Committee, Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee, Conservation Committee, Cultural Council, FEMA Flood Insurance Study Committee, Green Community Committee, MVP Committee, Noise Abatement Committee, Nahat Fire Station Architectural Assessment Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Sheehan. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote on the motion. If you're in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. And start your voting now. We have a vote. Those in favor, sixty-three. Those opposed, four. The motion carries. Article Sixteen. Ms. Zahora.
Thank you. I move that the town accept gifts, grants of money for the Nahat Life Saving Station, Green Lawn Cemetery, Fourth of July Committee and Fireworks, Recreation Commission, Council on Aging, Johnson School Programs, Beautification Program, Sailing Committee, Tennis Committee, Charles Kelly Scholarship Program, Veterans Memorial Committee, Nahat Community Garden, Nahat Public Library, Youth Commission, Nahat Public Safety Departments, Department of Public Works, Nahat Veterans Association, the Memorial Day Committee, and the Nahat Santa Parade Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Vanderslice. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, let's vote on it. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And start your voting now. We have a vote. Those in favor, sixty-four. Those opposed, two. I want to thank you all for coming today. This is so important for the town. As you can tell, we really have to keep the town going, and this is the nitty-gritty of getting that done. I also want to thank particularly the FINCOM, John Fulgham, Bob Vanderslice, Barbara Beatty, Julie Tarmey, Jeff Lewis, Dana Sheehan, DeWitt Brown, and Judy Zahora. Wonderful people, and they jumped into the fray, and we really appreciate their work. Selectmen have done a phenomenal job in this. Our town administrator, I don't even have to say anymore about him. Gave him a plaque. There you go. Thank you again for coming and helping the town keep going. We'll get some directions out.
So, Ocean View, first of all, thank you to Ocean View for donating the hand sanitizer and the water and the staff, and they will help you exit. Please stand from the back row, exit to the side, and walk out, keeping your distance, and enjoy the rest of the weekend. Thank you.